We need a mic. Okay. It should be, there you go. Don't drop them.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. And thank you again to our Board of Education for allowing the Shawnee Mission Area Council PTA to present to you this evening our winners of the Reflections Art Contest. I am Pam Hale. I am the President this year of the Shawnee Mission Area Council PTA. And I want to introduce to you, this year, our Vice President of Cultural Arts is Ms. Linda Brawley. And our Chair of Reflections and Citizenship this year is Shelley Lewis Campbell. And they are going to take us through our little program. But first, we are going to show a little video and let you guys see a tidbit of what each of these winners, their artwork or submission that won their award.
Is there sound?
You inspired all who saw you. I can hear your music still. I know you're God, but I still remember you. I believed in all of your dreams. And the music goes on and on and on and on and on. And I'm still inspired by you. You were only seventeen and gone much too soon. I feel your music and I wanna be like you. I believed in all of your dreams. And the music goes on and on and on and on and on. You still I remember you.
Can you see by the dark early light what so proudly we hail at twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous night?
Vanessa, did you hear?
What?
She said that Anthony died.
She died before we even got to vote.
I know. We should march just like her.
She inspired me, you know, that I'm not afraid to do anything.
Let's go.
Riding is something that I can use to not only ease stress, but it's also something that I really wanna do with my life. It's my future. They can instantly love you. They don't judge you. They don't think anything bad of you. They're just there to help you have a great ride.
Sportsback riding is as much as a team sport as any of the other sports that you can do at Northwest. You're a team and you have to rely on each other just like you would your other teammates.
Open up your heart. Reach for the stars. Go and chase your dreams. Feel asleep. Dreams aren't just a fantasy. Nothing is impossible if you just believe. Your future is a blinking open canvas. So go grab your brush and get ready to dream, babe.
So you can see we have quite a collection there of... Our theme this year was Believe, Dream, Inspire. And I think the kids really incorporated that into their works. And we were really proud of all the works that they're doing. And all of these will be... Have already gone on to state. And we hope to have news on winners fairly soon. And if they win at state, they will go on to a national competition. So we're pretty excited. So we're gonna have them come up and get their awards. First up, we have... Yeah, these first. Bryce Bean, who did the primary music composition. Okay. Next up, we have Grace Piper Fields. Oh, I'm sorry. Who do we have? Oh, sorry. Yes, for next in music, we have Grace Piper Fields for intermediate music composition. Do a picture, okay? Next up, we have Haley Deardorf, who is middle musical composition. And our last musical composition for senior high school is Hannah Patterson. Who was also on the news about her submission, so... Then for primary photography, we have Remy Oberender. And for intermediate photography, we have Gabby Hortua. For middle photography, we have Evan Green. Oh, okay. And for primary visual art... Oh, sorry, hang on. I'm sorry. Okay, for intermediate visual art, we have Anslee Smythe. I think a few people are still on spring break. For middle visual art, we have Caroline Edge. Oh, okay. Yes, for senior visual art, we have Olivia Broom. And for our dance, our only category that we have a dance one in is middle school with Peyton Panovich. For intermediate film production, we have Lily Utte. For middle school film production, we have Ada Heller.
Form a circle around here. You can all line up this way.
For senior film production, we have Sarah Laney. For primary literature, we have Maggie Garretts. For intermediate literature, we have Alexa Magstead. And for middle school literature, we have Erin Smith. And those are our winners. Leanne, do you want a group photo?
Group photo. Yeah, why don't we come up here?
That might work better. That would be great, okay.
So why don't we have her? So you can all get your big group picture. Go ahead.
And good job coming on a spring break night. Yay.
Nice job, Pam.
Wonderful, wonderful.
That was great.
Is everyone ready? Ready, set to go? Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. I would invite you now to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome. And we will move right into the agenda. You can follow on the screens there through the report by the superintendent, Dr. Hinson.
Thank you, Mrs. Zelley. We'll turn my microphone on. Thank you, Mrs. Zelley. I appreciate it. I have several things for you this evening. First of all, as you are well aware, we trained about 2,100 adults today in relation to our Apple Initiative. The training went extremely well, and we have several individuals that are in the audience today that have devoted so much time to make this work effectively. And so I won't start calling out names, but there've been a lot of hours. You can tell by looking at them which ones.
They're smiling along there.
They don't want to stand up. Several individuals that have worked so many hours to make this happen and really received some great news today. I had an opportunity to visit with the Apple trainers, and they do this training around the country. And their comment to me today was this was the best organized professional development that they had ever been a part of in their career. And so they were extremely impressed with the organizational effort, all of the work that went into place. And so think about it, we trained 2,100 people today, went off without a glitch. And so just extremely proud of our staff that it worked so very diligently to make this happen. We have some of our vendors with us tonight and employees as well. You know, anytime you implement something of this scale, you're going to have issues. And we're going to have issues. I mean, there's no way around that. But it went so very well today. And just, we're going to share a little bit of that with you during the PowerPoint as well. In fact, Dr. Neal's already jumped to this. It was an exciting day on our Apple Professional Development Training, and you can see that before you. And so, great day in the Shawnee Mission School District. And I also can't give enough credit to all of our employees. There are a lot of new things in relation to this technology that are being rolled out, and our employees have just responded so well. And our Apple trainers were commenting today on things they had heard from teachers and that excitement that really exists. And so to all of the employees of the district and everybody in the audience that really made this event today so very successful, I think we owe them a great deal of gratitude, and I'm very proud of everybody in this regard. Dr. Neal, we'll go back to the start there, but you know, it's an exciting thing today in the district to have our iPads and also our MacBook Airs rolled out. So, some information that I'll share with you, and you've received a little bit of that earlier, but four of our Shawnee Mission students were top competitors at the Kansas Regional Braille Challenge. And so congratulations to them. I'm going to try to go through some names, and so if I don't get all of them correctly, correct, you'll have to forgive me, but contest judges recognized Briarwood student Audrey Bethay, Pawnee student A.J. Lor with first and second place respectively in the elementary division. And then Ashley, I think it's Tahoe, took first place in the junior varsity division. And then Northwest student Alex Butler took first place in the varsity division. So this is a preliminary qualifying competition for the National Braille Challenge. If I can talk tonight, we'll start this over, but it is offered to promote Braille literacy among students who are blind or have visual impairments. And so congratulations to these young people. Apache Elementary School, in the work session tonight, we heard a little bit about Apache. It was recently awarded the Energy Stars Certification. As you know, the building was open to students in 2011, and it's now our ninth school building to receive this recognition. So congratulations to all of the individuals that worked to make Apache possible. And as some of you may be aware in the audience, the Apache model is the prototype for the Chihuahua rebuild that we're working on currently in the district. The Shawnee Mission Education Foundation has been awarded a significant grant in regard to the District Safe and Healthy Schools Initiative. This is a grant worth $28,000, and it's been awarded by the Healthcare Foundation of Greater Kansas City, and it's intended to develop a cohesive, coordinated approach to address mental health concerns. So congratulations to all of those that made this happen. And I see Linda Roser in the audience tonight and those that worked with Linda. This April, which as you know is right around the corner, the Shawnee Mission West Football Community will be honored with the Sprint Community Champion Award. The community will be honored at the upcoming Kansas City Sports Awards Banquet for the way they, following the loss of a teammate, responded with a spirit of unity and came together as a family. So a great honor for everyone at West. What a tragedy for that community and for all of us in the Shawnee Mission School District this fall, but they're being recognized. I'm going to tell you that again, spirit of unity and the way they came together as a family during a time of tragedy. So again, congratulations to them. And again, as I started out with, what a great day in the school district today. And so this is just the first step as we move forward to really fully immerse technology and everything we're doing as a tool and resource here in the Shawnee Mission School District. So, a lot of great accolades and awards of things that are going on. A couple of other things that I want to briefly mention to you tonight. We are still working through the Demographers Report. As you know, there's a lot of information to digest in that report. As a part of that report, there are a couple of things certainly that may occur. We are planning on bringing a report to you at the April Board Meeting in relation to any boundary changes that we would recommend for this coming school year. As you know, we have some buildings that are beyond capacity, and so we're looking intently to say, can we make some boundary changes for this next school year in a few areas where we have capacity issues currently? So we'll have more conversation about that issue in April. We have added into the budget, into the teacher pool, if you will, 10 additional teachers that we haven't placed yet, but we will place as we look at enrollment this next year, because as you know, we watch enrollment throughout the spring and early summer to really make those decisions. But we have budgeted 10 additional teachers in that pool. We've also budgeted an additional five kindergarten teachers. And so that's a part of looking at those boundary changes. Do those need to occur? And as you know, in the boundary changes, if we can, we want to keep elementary schools in the same feeder high school if we can. And also, we look at major traffic corridors, like are we crossing Metcalf or other areas, and try to work through those areas. And so sometimes that becomes, as you're well aware, a little difficult, but we do have teachers that are in the pool that we will place, looking at enrollment and what occurs. Thinking about the Demographers Report and really what does the future hold in relation to enrollment, I found this to be really interesting. Our kindergarten enrollment this year is the largest kindergarten class in the Shawnee Mission School District since 1995. And so as we look at enrollment trends and then trying to project what's going to happen this next year in kindergarten enrollment, since the '08-'09 school year, our incoming kindergarten class has been larger than our exiting high school class. So trying to project enrollment and what's going to happen for the future, as you know, I've publicly stated, I'm not bringing any recommendation to you to close any of our elementary schools at all. We're looking at consolidating administrative sites, as you know. But as we look at these enrollment trends, and again, since '08-'09, our incoming kindergarten classes have been larger than our exiting high school classes. This year's kindergarten class, the largest kindergarten class since 1995, those are great indicators. And so as we continue to monitor those trends, if those continue, obviously, that really gives us some issues that have to be addressed, and those are great things really to consider. So, points to remember, still working through the Demographers Report. We'll bring a report back to you in April about potential boundary changes. And again, these will not be massive, but some tweaks that we might need to make for this next school year based upon some enrollment issues. We do have a pool of surplus teachers, if you will, that we have budgeted, not knowing what's going to happen with enrollment. And so as we monitor the next several months of enrollment by building and grade level, then we'll be able to place those teachers through that process. And so we are not in a situation, because of enrollment, we are reducing staff at the elementary level. We're trying to align teacher to student ratio throughout the district, but really we'll be following these trends very carefully to see what happens. And so, stay tuned. I know that certainly there are a lot of people interested in any boundary changes. And again, some buildings where we have, they're over capacity now, and so we have to address those issues. Questions on any of those things? That makes sense? Okay, perfect. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Dr. Hinson. We will move on to open forum, and I'll just read the little blurb on open forum here. Addressing the board, at the beginning of each regular business meeting, Board of Education provides an open forum as an opportunity for public comment on school district issues. Agendas are published in advance to notify the community of the topics under consideration. Patron comments are welcome, but those wishing to speak to an issue not included in the agenda will usually not receive a response during the meeting. We have two speakers tonight in open forum, the first being Kelly Martucci. Welcome.
Can I put this down, this laptop top? Just to leave my papers, or is that going to screw something up?
I don't think so. Can she close the laptop?
Sure.
Closing.
We'll see what happens.
I'm not going to, I won't press it all the way down. I'm just going to close it. Okay. My name is Kelly Martucci. I have two children in the elementary, in an elementary school in the district. And just by way of background, this class size issue came up because we recently received notification that my daughter's first grade class, which now is spread across three classrooms of really admittedly dreamy sizes. Her class is 17 students, and the other two, I think, are 18 students. We recently received notice that they're going to put that group of kids into two second grade classrooms next year. So we started doing a little research, and we asked our principal, hey, how many kids can we have in a class? She wrote back, the policy in the district would permit 29 kids in a second grade class. Some parents got together and were surprised by that number, so we started doing a little bit of research into how that number came to be, and is there anything that we can do to lower that number? And then sitting here tonight, listening to Dr. Hinson, I started thinking about all these other issues that really do relate to the class size issue. Increased demands on our teachers, the Apple Initiative, a changing student population. We have a lot of kids that are English language learners, not only, of course, at our school, but other schools, way more than the school that my kids go to. So they have English language learners in there. We're constantly mainstreaming more special needs kids. Our teachers have these increased demands, and then to look at a class size of potentially 28 or 29 kids in those lower grades, I think is asking a lot. We have talked to some teachers informally that agree that we have the core curriculum now, we have a new reading program this year, we're asking more and more of our phenomenal teachers. And I think that it's time that we look at the class size policy again and see if maybe a change needs to be made and how we might get to that change. So it looks like in 2011, and again, this is just from the newspaper, I could be wrong, you all know well more than I do, it looks like in 2011, there was an increase to 26 students as the maximum for kindergarten and first. And again, now it sounds like the policy is 29. That seems like a big jump, especially in light of our changing population and increased demands that have come up in the last several years. We looked at a website, classsizematters.org, put together by a group in New York. And just some interesting things, I know a lot of this is probably things that you know, but the U.S. Department of Education has, based on their research, concluded that class size reduction is one of only four evidence-based reforms that has proven to increase student achievement. Based on their research, students assigned to smaller classrooms in the early grades, K through 2, do better in every way that can be measured. They score better on tests, they get better grades, and they go to school more often. Their attendance is improved. And they've also concluded that smaller class sizes help those who need the very most help. Children from poor and minority backgrounds experience twice the gains as an average student might. So my friend, Ms. Hallmark, is going to talk about some other issues, separate issues, still on the class size issue, of course, but we wanted to just bring this to your attention and ask if maybe this is the time to look at this policy again and see if a change might be appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Amy Hallmark.
So as you heard, my name is Amy Hallmark. I currently have three children in the Shawnee Mission School District. Next year, I'll have four, all at one school for one whole year, and then never again after that. I know. And I'm actually a product of the Shawnee Mission School District. I graduated from Shawnee Mission East, went to Prairie Elementary, Indian Hills, which is still called that. I say junior high, my kids get mad, but the middle school. I believe we have one of the best school districts in the area, the state, and quite frankly, having lived in other parts of the country, the country. This is an amazing school district. I forced my husband to live in the Shawnee Mission School District when we moved back from Virginia. At first, he didn't know why we couldn't get a bigger house for less money, but now that he's involved with our school and our district, he doesn't want to live anywhere else either. Which is why I was really disturbed by, when I heard that my seven-year-old son, who, you know, is your typical first grade boy, would be in a class, he's currently in a class of 18 students and would, could possibly be in the past for 26 to 29 students. He, as I volunteered in the class a lot, as many parents do, which is part of what makes our district so amazing, that would, it's hard now for our teacher with 18 students sometimes. We have a couple of special needs students in our classroom, we have a para sometimes, but it's just overwhelming the assistance some of the kids need in the classroom. And to go to 29 students for that young of an age, I think defeats the purpose of our whole district. The goal of our district is to give the best education to our students. And when we do things like put 29 little kids in a class with one teacher, I don't think we're able to meet that goal. And it may be, it's fine if you have an amazing teacher and you have kids who can handle it, but when you have maybe even an average teacher and kids who need help, someone's going to fall through the cracks. And from speaking to the teachers at our school, the last thing they want is to go home at the end of the day and not think that they have met the needs of every single student in their class. For heaven's sakes, to be a teacher is to sacrifice so much of their time and energy, and we have amazing ones at our school, but they want to be able to help everybody, and that's expecting a lot of them, especially kindergarten through third grade when they're so little, and as we know, boys can be a little rowdy. So we kind of, as Kelly, Mrs. Martucci mentioned, we really want to have the district look at this class size. What we found in some of our research was that many of the districts in the area, Independence and Blue Springs are actually reducing their class size. Missouri has an initiative, the state has an initiative to reduce class size. Missouri has an initiative, the state has an initiative to reduce class sizes and improve schools, which, part of the reason we live in Kansas, as we know. And I personally find it, I mean, to me, it's probably more than we want to do, but in kindergarten, their limit is going to be 17 in one class. And that, to me, is amazing, and gives the kids a chance. And then it goes from there. They reduce, they reduce them down to 22 students and some 25. And basically, throughout the country, what the research is showing is that a smaller class size is what is helping students. Some of the myths about class sizes that we were able to find out was that, that when you lower the class size, you have lower teacher turnover rates, that the quality of teacher is increased, and they stay longer. You also find that, one of, obviously, money's always an issue, and I think we all know that, and we all understand that. But some people believe reducing a class size is too expensive, but when you look at the research, and it's long-term research, that really shows how smaller class sizes help students achieve, how can we say that reducing class size is costly? Compared to what? Because if you think of education as too expensive, try looking at ignorance. That's way more expensive. We just really feel that at this time, we would really like the district administration to look at our class sizes, and what we can do that would best help our students. Because as we all know, that's the whole reason any of us are here, is to give the best education to the students in the Shawnee Mission School District. So, we kind of wanted to know, and Kelly and I had some questions about what happens from here with that kind of request. Do we, you know, is it, do we need to fill out paperwork? Is there something else we can do that would help facilitate anything that would at least look at the issue? We would just really love to look at the issue.
Call your legislator, she says. There is, there is a tab on the website that's Ask the District. You can certainly submit that question, and someone will get back with you.
And that, and we, it was a little difficult. We were trying to find the policy. We obviously were informed by the deputy superintendent, superintendent, who is in charge of K through 3, and she kept telling us it was the policy, it was the policy. And yet, I could not find the policy on the website at all. And I really did try searching several different ways of saying it. So I don't know where the policy is that we can actually look at, but our research is just showing us that class size is huge in the success of our children.
Again, I would say go to Ask the District, they will get back with you and point you in that direction then.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Hallmark.
We do have, I think it was last month, at that board meeting, a presentation was made to the board on staffing, and that has the guidelines in it. Is that available to?
We can provide it to them, certainly.
Thank you for coming this evening. Okay. We will move on to the approval of the minutes of February 24th meeting.
I move.
Thank you, Dr. Denny and Mrs. Bisfield. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries 7-0.
6-0.
6-0, sorry. Missing someone tonight. Adoption of the agenda.
I move adoption of the agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Neighbors.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Levens. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries 6-0. Move on to routine business by consent. Is there any item that any board member would like removed from the consent agenda?
I move approval of routine business by consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Mack.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Neighbors. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries 6-0. That moves us on through the entire consent agenda to letter M, Administrative Services, and the action item, Dr. Hinson.
We have four proclamations this evening, and so you have those proclamations. The first one we have tonight for you is in relation to our Substitute Teacher Recognition Week.
I move for acceptance of the proclamation and recognition of Substitute Teacher Recognition Week. Whereas substitute teachers impact on the education of hundreds of students each day by teaching students when the regular teacher is unable to be in the classroom, and whereas substitute teachers are in many situations fulfilling teaching duties, including planning, parent conferences, and grading for teachers that are absent for extended periods. And whereas substitute teachers take on the classroom responsibilities with often little or no notice, and have the ability to respond to a request in the early hours of the morning, arrive and take on the daily teaching routine and lessons, and successfully meet the needs of the students and school. And whereas substitute teachers are an integral part of the teaching staff of the district, maintaining teaching credentials with the Kansas State Department of Education. And whereas there are over 525 active substitutes in the Shawnee Mission workforce that fulfill teaching responsibilities on average of 150 per day. Therefore, the Shawnee Mission Board of Education does hereby proclaim March 31 through April 4, 2014, as Substitute Teacher Week, and urges staff, students, and parents to recognize the contributions student teachers make to the education of our students.
Second.
Student teachers.
Thank you, Mrs.
Substitute teachers.
Very good. Any discussion? Thank you to our substitute teachers. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries 6-0. Thank you very much. Dr. Hinson, do you want to introduce the next proclamation?
Go right ahead.
Okay. The next one is for National Volunteer Week. Mrs. Neighbors.
Thank you. I move the following proclamation, National Volunteer Week. Whereas the community patrons of the Shawnee Mission School District invest in schools as volunteer partners. Whereas these volunteer partners share their time, talent, and wisdom with the students who are our future in a changing world. Whereas these volunteers provide inspiration, pride, enthusiasm, and a commitment for quality education. And whereas the Board of Education and Superintendent wish to express their gratitude for the opportunity our students have to experience curriculum enriched by the contributions of these volunteer partners, who are contributing to the development of our students as 21st century learners. And be it therefore resolved that volunteers in the Shawnee Mission School District be given the deepest respect, appreciation, and admiration of the district, administration, and staff, and that April 6 through the 12, 2014, be recognized as National Volunteer Week.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Denny. Any other discussion? Volunteers are vital to our district, and we thank all of you that do volunteer. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries 6-0. Dr. Denny.
I move the following. Whereas Shawnee Mission School District Secretaries master technology, perhaps that's even more so now that we've started our initiative, effectively utilize their interpersonal and communication skills, manage projects, and organize the office, and the superintendent, apply their creativity to solve problems, and most importantly, have the willingness to learn and accept new challenges. And whereas Shawnee Mission School District Secretaries are vital contributors in today's team-oriented work environment, and are key frontline public relations ambassadors for the Shawnee Mission School District, now therefore, the Shawnee Mission Board of Education hereby proclaims April 23, 2014, as Administrative Professionals Day, saluting the valuable contributions of secretaries in the Shawnee Mission School District.
Amen. I mean, second.
Thank you, Mrs. Mack. And thank you to all of our administrative professionals. And you'll notice this is a little ahead of the game, it's April 23rd, but we won't have another meeting until that time, so we are voting on that tonight. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries 6-0. Thank you very much. For Para-Professional Appreciation Week, Mrs. Bisfield.
I would move approval of the Para-Professional Appreciation Week proclamation of 2014. Whereas paraprofessionals are members of educational teams and have valued roles in the Shawnee Mission School District, and whereas paraprofessionals assist in the provision of special education and related services to 3,826 students identified with exceptionalities in the Shawnee Mission School District. And whereas paraprofessionals in the Shawnee Mission School District participate in educational experiences and staff development to expand knowledge and broaden perspective in the provision of special education and related services to students with exceptionalities, the Shawnee Mission School District Board of Education does hereby proclaim April 21 through April 25, 2014, as Paraprofessional Appreciation Week in the Shawnee Mission School District, and urge all to join in this observation.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Denny. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries 6-0. Move on to Action for Business Services. Dr. Hinson.
As you know, we started discussing this issue in January, and we have a frequent visitor, or frequent visitors to our school board meetings. Mr. Bartow, it's a pleasure to see you back this evening, and you can introduce those that are with you, and I think we have a resolution of an issue this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Hinson, and it's truly a pleasure to be here. First of all, just as a reminder, let me introduce Roger Edgar with George K. Baum and Company. This is not David Artterberry, so. David Artterberry exists. This is Gina Rikoff. Gina works with Gilmore &amp; Bell, who serves as bond counsel for the district. And we're very excited to be here tonight, very excited about being a willing, a part in order, in putting together the financing of this great Apple Initiative, which is really going to benefit kids. And the purpose of our meeting tonight is to pass a resolution that'll bring closure to the funding of this Apple Initiative, and be able to put the computers in the hands of the kids where they belong. And Roger will cover the details of that. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer those.
Thank you.
I'm going to make my comments brief as well. The, we've gone over the details of this in the past, but I'll just summarize them for the benefit of the media and also for your memory. This is an $18.14 million loan that was arranged through and with Apple. The interest rate on the loan is, is a few one-hundredths of a percent higher than what we originally brought to you, which was their initial expression of interest. It wasn't a quote, it was just a, you know, it was an estimate. And so, but it's, it's miniscule, it's very much just the same basic proposal. We've spent a lot of time going back and forth with them to reduce those kind of high-level agreements to specific terms and loan documents, which are before you tonight, that this resolution would authorize. The, as I mentioned, there are, this is a four-year repayment schedule, which we talked to you about earlier. It's about eight payments, semi-annual payments of about $2.3 million. There are, there's only about 249,000 of interest payable on this loan over its life, so it's a very, very low rate. We were able, by going this way, one of the other benefits was we were able to reduce the costs associated with doing this transaction. There, the total cost, we estimate to be about $35,000, which is probably a third of what we would have spent had we gone to the rating agencies and done this in a more traditional way. This loan will be repaid from your capital outlay levy, from your capital outlay fund, from funds that are in that capital outlay fund each year through an existing levy, so there would be no property tax increase to your patrons associated with this. And I think that's one of the things that's very important for everybody to understand, that while this is a loan, this does not raise property taxes. So, your actions, I'm going to turn this over to your bond counsel to describe the documents before you, because they prepared those, so I don't want to, you know, kind of steal the podium from Gina.
Good evening. Gina Rikoff with Gilmore &amp; Bell. As Roger and Dick both mentioned, before you this evening is a resolution that would authorize the issuance of general obligation capital outlay temporary notes. That's the formal name for the loan. All of the terms that are contained in this resolution are, as Roger described. If you are to approve this resolution this evening, that gives the board president, the clerk, and various district officials the authority to sign all of the necessary documents. It'll lock in the interest rate today, so there'll be no further changes to the numbers that everybody has seen. And then we'll proceed with all of the other legal steps that we need to take, so that funds will be deposited to the school district's bank account on April 21st, so that the money will be there to be able to pay the invoices for the Apple Initiative. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have about the resolution or the process going forward.
I just want to just confirm, so the interest rate at this, today, if we approve today, is 0.6234% per year, and the total amount being loaned is $18,182,739.42.
That's correct. That's the stated interest rate and the principal amount of the loan.
Which, folks, is really a phenomenal rate, and given in the past week, interest rates, especially on short-term notes and short-term borrowing, I'm just talking short-term, I'm talking about five, five years or less, has gone up 20, 25 basis points. We've held this rate all the way through, so my congratulations to you. Fabulous rate, $250,000 of interest on $18 million.
Mrs. Bisfield.
I would move approval of the resolution to sell general obligation capital outlay temporary notes.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Denny. Is there any further discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you very much. I'd like to say that you're through seeing us, but you probably are not.
You'll be back.
We'll be back. Thank you very much. My congratulations to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to '02. Dr. Hinson.
As you are aware, one of the messages that we've heard very loud and clearly through the listening tour, through the whole process, was can we consolidate administrative services and be more efficient in that process? And so, the issue before you tonight, we are recommending the Architectural Engineering Services Agreement with ACI Bowlin Architects for a potential new central administration building. This is not for the construction of the building or anything else, but it's just with ACI, so they can really proceed in looking at this building as a possibility. So what we're discussing is this site, McKeechen, Arrowhead, Broadmoor, Indian Creek, and then Smiths, and not all the Smiths building is going to go to this site, maybe not any of it, but can we consolidate those services to one site? And so, the approval tonight, if you will agree, is an agreement with ACI Bowlin Architects, so they can proceed with the design of this project. Again, I want to make sure very, it's very clear, this is not for the construction of this project. And so, we'll continue this in-depth investigation. They'll really go to work now, in-depth, at really designing this building. So we are, as a district, working through who would be located, this building from all of those campuses? Who would be located out in school buildings? Obviously, personnel that deal directly with students, we would prefer they be located in school buildings, as we have space for that to occur. The goal as well is the McKeechen, Arrowhead, Indian Creek, and the Smiths sites would be disposed of as property in the Shawnee Mission School District. So as we talk about all of our campuses, there are no schools that are involved in this process at all, but administrative sites in the process. Broadmoor would not be disposed, as we look at this, because it needs to be used for several functions for years yet ahead. So that's what's in the design conversation process. This is just with the architects right now to proceed with more in-depth information in the design of this potential building.
Any other questions? Okay. Mrs. Mack?
I move approval of RFP 14-002, approval of Architectural Engineering Services for the Central Administration Building.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Neighbors. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries 6-0. Thank you very much. We'll move on to P, Approval of Middle Schools Athletics.
This is an item that we put on the agenda tonight because of, it's a very significant issue for the Shawnee Mission School District, and so certainly wanted your vote of approval and blessing on this project. I'm thrilled to have Matt Johnson back with us tonight. Matt's loading some information. But we wanted to go through one more time what we're talking about in relation to the implementation of middle school start, middle school sports, then we're ready to really launch that initiative. And so, Matt?
Yeah, just a brief overview of information I've presented before, and if you have any questions, I'm right here. I would like to say, I'd like to talk to the people who spoke before me about getting an interest rate like that on my mortgage. Quite impressive, so. Okay, just to say what I've put together... Okay, just to, to say what I've put together that you have seen before, that we would have seasons starting next fall in middle school sports with boys and girls cross-country for seventh and eighth graders, as well as boys wrestling for seventh and eighth graders, followed by a first session of winter sports with girls basketball, which would go up until Christmas break, be about a 10-week season. Right after Christmas break, we would have the Winter Two Session, which would be boys basketball, about 10 weeks of that. And then after spring break, or for the fourth quarter, we would have girls volleyball for seventh and eighth grade girls, an eight-week season. So those are basically the seasons that I had outlined previously. And Jen, this doesn't include everything I went over, but just some of the important facts overview. Our high school athletic directors would be working in collaboration with our middle school coordinators to just run middle school sports, you know, with me overseeing them. Middle school teams would only compete against other Shawnee Mission District schools. Exception might be in cross-country. No athletic training services would be provided at the middle schools, but coaches would be required to be first aid, CPR-trained, and will receive some additional training in how to respond to any severe traumas or things that may take place on the playing field. Middle schools in this first year, maybe two, would not be members of CACIA, as we take some time to learn how to be middle schools that are taking part in athletics. However, the district would provide catastrophic insurance coverage for all participants of sports, and we would also offer the supplemental insurance to families should they elect to pay a small fee to help supplement some of the insurance costs that go there. It's the same thing we offer to our high school athletes. And then, middle school students would be required to complete an extracurricular participation packet, much like the one that high school students have to do. And then, of course, our Sunflower League Commissioner of Officials would provide the scheduling of game officials for basketball, volleyball, and wrestling, and this is important because we would then have professional officials officiating these games and stuff, so that it's, it's more for the quality of the experience of the, of the teams and the people there, but also for the safety of the, the athletes. You don't want just a volunteer or an hourly-paid staff member going out there and, and officiating wrestling, okay? These, these officials are trained, and they know how to, to handle these things. So, we would be using official from the Sunflower League. Our estimated cost, last time I was here, I told you it was going to be around $280,000, and I, I did increase that mainly because we decided to provide the catastrophic insurance. And there are, there are expenses that, you know, we're not exactly sure what those costs will be, because if Westridge has six basketball teams, because we're not cutting anybody, they may have a few more coaches, for example, and that would be an increase in what I had projected for coaching costs, which is at an hourly pay. But everything I have looked at, I, I am very, very confident we're going to stick right at that $300,000 mark. I mean, I don't think it's going to be anything significant in difference from that, so. And then this is a picture of the last time we had middle school or junior high sports.
Are you in there, Matt?
I'm in this picture.
Are you?
So, I'm sure it's pretty difficult to find out where I am, but I thought that, how could you say no to that face? Just to bring a little levity. You'll have to find it. I'm not going to point it out.
Okay, to keep that photo up. I was going to say.
I had no business being on that team, but I had a great, great experience. So let me get this off there as quickly as I can. So what questions do you have? And it can't be anything about that picture.
And Matt, we're still discussing with potential contributors to offset some of the costs, and there's some of that still in the works.
Yep. And that may occur, and I'm very confident that will occur, actually, so.
Great. Wonderful. Any other questions?
I would like, I would like to move with great enthusiasm for action item P1 for the approval of middle school sports.
Second. Thank you, Mrs. Levens. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries six zero. Thank you very much, Matt Johnson. Okay, we'll move on to reports to the board, the financial report. Dr. Henson?
We have the monthly financial report in front of you. We'd be happy to entertain any questions tonight.
Are there any questions by any board members? Okay. I guess not. Then we'll move on to comments from board members. Mrs. Neighbors?
I just would like to reiterate, we made several proclamations tonight, but I don't think we can ever thank enough the volunteers and the number of hours that you give us each year, because you make Shawnee Mission what we are, whether it's to PTA and/or our senior youth groups, our senior groups. You give us those extra hands and eyes and ears and time that we might not have, and you make a huge difference in our district. Second of all, our secretaries, having served this one many years ago, I do know that the foundation of every building is the secretary and the custodian. If you want a question asked, or you want to know where something is, you go to those two people. Principal doesn't know. Our superintendent might, but. The secretaries and the custodians are our support group and everyone. And para-professionals give a lot of love and attention to kids. We're in a very needy area and can never be taken for granted or thanked enough. And finally, our substitute teachers that give our regular teachers the opportunity to be sick when they're sick, and give them the quality of education that we in Shawnee Mission have come to expect. And it's always a, a pleasure to get to recognize these groups of individuals, because they are the base of our district, and thank you to every one of you for what you do.
Mrs. Mack?
Believe it or not, our winter sports have ended, and our spring sports have started, although I'm sure they're inside a lot. And I, I'm elected from the Shawnee Mission Northwest area, and I just want to commend our girls and boys basketball teams. They both went to state this year, and that's quite an accomplishment. I'm super enthusiastic about bringing back middle school sports, but I really want to recognize all of our student athletes who have done incredible jobs and in competitions and everything throughout. And now they're looking outside at the weather today, just going, wow, baseball season. That's going to be interesting, how they're going to do that. I also wanted to, you know, I mentioned it casually, casually tonight to the parents who are here, but this was another day of spring break, and our teachers worked so hard today, and just really want to thank them for all that they're doing. I mean, this one-on-one initiative is incredible. I think it's the best thing for our students, but we know that it's going to take a lot of work on all of our employees, especially our teachers, so I really just want to give them a shout-out. I also really want to thank our superintendent and members of the Board of Education who have been able to go to Topeka in these last couple of weeks. The legislature is in full swing. Please keep up to date. Please keep up to date on our website and others. I know, I'm looking at Pam Hale and SMAC, and they keep it great up-to-date. You guys do a terrific job as well. There's a lot of moving targets right now, so I would just ask that you keep in mind the students of the district, because that's what we try to do every day, is remember, try to think about what's best for kids, so. I want to thank our board president especially. You've gone up a lot. Thank you for your time and effort. This is a volunteer position, and she's, she's tearing up the turnpike, but I really want to thank you for that. And for Dr. Henson, you really are testifying a lot and meeting with people, so thank you on behalf.
Any other comments? Well, I would just like to add on top of Mrs. Neighbors' nice comments about all of our people that we had proclamations for, to thank Mrs. Terri Wintering, who is our clerk of the board also, and keeps us very much in line and has very late nights with us often, so. Anyway, any other comments? With that, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you so much for coming this evening.